All right, everybody else ready here?
Good evening.
Hey you.
All right. 5:15, let's call the workshop to order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Muggie.
Here.
Councilmember Woods is absent.
All right, thank you very much. Top the agenda. Any motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Up to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got two topics tonight. First one up is community center discussion. Jason Nordby has put together a proposal and he is here to discuss that, so I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate being given this time to go over what I believe is a new idea for the community center. I'll wait 30 seconds.
We're already called to order, so.
Oh.
He's just gonna start his presentation.
Okay.
Welcome.
So when I was going to school, I always appreciated when the teachers would let me know what was on the test later on. So I wanted to start by doing something I appreciated other people doing. So at the end of the day today, what I'm hoping is that we might have an idea on what one of the four things we'd like to do. Schedule further discussion, have Brian communicate with Deed, possibly put in RFP, or B there, or D, there's not enough information to continue. I've divided my idea into two parts. One is the building and the other is the operation of the building. For this presentation day, I'm gonna start with the building side of it. The concept I went for, I continually labeled as BSC. Basic, simple, and efficient. I also believe that this idea has a ton of untapped potential. When I was looking at the plan, I first decided what were my core principles or must haves. For me, the smart ideas were to have a new roof, new HVAC, have it one level, no future planned expense, and by that I was thinking no, you know, large principle that was going to be due later that would be on the burden of the taxpayer. As maintenance free as possible, and also separate entrances for the community center of the library. The currency community center is on your plan, and that is the Google pick of the site. Overall, what my idea is, in a nutshell, is that we demolish about 85% of the building and keep just a small portion. Overlaid is the size of the building I was pro... Our laptop's our touchscreen. Overlaid is the size of the building that I was proposing that we put on the current site. Approximately 170 feet by 118 feet. And again, my core principle was always basic, simple, and efficient. So, the thought was to have two separate entrances always. This way we can have controlled access and the timing of one is not dependent on the timing of the other. And on the back of the building, my thought was to have large garage doors, so it could be opened up to the elements for some fun summertime activities. And again, this would be demolishing about 85% and rebuilding the other, keeping 15%. If you take the roof off the building, that's the current view. On the right side is where the existing library is. All the open space would be the new community center. The two doors there, one was, one was storage and one was maintenance for the fiber to get that, things like that. But basically, it's a very open plan, single-story building with a ton of potential. There's also been some talk about that the library wanted to expand. That is also an option with this plan. Rather than the library portion of it only taking three-quarters of the building, we could extend the library portion to take the entire side of that building. Should the library want to expand and/or the historical society would want to move into the end of the library. Both, those are things that have been floated, and I wanted to incorporate both potentials into this plan. So I believe with a very easy modification, both of those options would be possible going forward. One of the other criticisms of the current site is that there isn't much parking. This plan also addresses that somewhat. The triangle that you see below the building is about 10,500 square feet because of the redesign of the building that will also provide additional parking. And there again, this is a future discussion of, is it all future discussing, is it some green space? But there is options and it does address a portion of the problem to affect the local businesses slightly less. I am not authorized or have any authority from the city to go out and seek quotes. So the next page I'm gonna show you are the free quotes that any single person could get going online for the sites that offer the services. So, please take them with a huge grain of salt, because honestly, I don't trust those sites very... But I wanted to see if this concept was even feasible, and I was hoping to get a relative ballpark. And again, so from the internet sites, the demolition was gonna run about $275,000. And again, going with the basic, simple, and efficient plan, I quoted two different types of buildings. One was an all-metal building and was, one was a concrete precast. The all-metal building came in at $43 a square foot for 862,000. The concrete precast was $57 a square foot at a little over 1.1 million dollars. Brand-new HVAC for the building was quoted at $13 a square foot for 260,000. And the architectural general contractor cost for a building like this was quoted at $15 a square foot for slightly north of $300,000. If we chose to pave that entire triangle area, we are looking at about $7 a square foot for an additional cost of 73,500. So by internet math, which again, please be skeptical, the cost of this proposal was 1.7 million to 2 million dollars. If this is something that we choose to move forward with and explore this idea more, my long-term thought would be in the proposal, we ask for the cap of this plan to be at 4.5 million. I believe that would allow us to hold enough in reserve that for any potential cost overruns or additional expenditures would still be within the scope of the grant money and not put upon the burden of the citizens. The next part of the operation is the operation of the building. I followed my same plan of basic, simple, and efficient with a ton of potential. There had been talk that we needed to always partner with a charity or a business for the community center. One of the things that concerned me was longevity. The average small business in the United States lasts about five years and only 20% survive to 20 years. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, about 12% of businesses in the United States are older than 26 years. The U.S. Department of Labor found that about 20% of new businesses survive for more than 20 years. The lifespan of a charity can vary greatly, but statistically, many new nonprofits don't make it past their fifth year, with around 12% failing within that timeframe and roughly 30% not surviving for the past 10 years. So when I looked at partnering, one of the caveats for the grant money that we were, have a potential to receive, was between 20 and 25 years. With the history of the longevity of charities and businesses, I don't know that tying our long-term success of the community center to a company or a charity is a wise proceeding. So I looked at other options. So how do we fulfill our obligation for the next 25 years? The plan that I was thinking of, to just fulfill the basic requirements of the deed, is a North St. Paul Farmers Market one day a week and six to 12 one-day programs by our Parks and Rec community. I believe if implemented correctly, these could satisfy the basic and just the basic needs of the deed. Now, as I said before, basic, simple, and efficient, but with a ton of potential. If we were to end there, I think we would be a huge disservice to the city. But, just talking about the things that we're committed to for the next 25 years, I believe that's doable by the city. The St. Paul Farmers Markets have been operating since 1854, over 165 years. The Dane County Farmers Market in Madison has been operating since 1972. Minneapolis started in 1876, and from their current location, they've been in operation since 1937. There are proven examples for us to use, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Farmers Market historically have been very successful, long-lived, and they're relatively cost-neutral. And what I mean by cost-neutral is, they pay for themselves with a tiny bit left over, but they're not, they're not a great moneymaker, but they're also not a burden upon the site. This is a top-down view of the building I was proposing. Roughly, there's room for 64 tables, which is comparable to the other local farmers markets. And that leaves a ton of space left over if it needed to be crowded in. Some of the examples of surrounding cities are showing us for their farmers market, and there are lots of examples for us to follow, is they can be and often are culturally inclusive. There's community organization tables and, you know, free for local clubs of use, VFWs, Legions, Lions, Rotaries, Chamber of Commerce. And they're also discounted for things like seniors, veterans, or people selling and growing culturally diverse foods. One of the things that we talked about at our recent retreat was also providing better outreach to our citizens. I believe this farmers market also has a potential to help in that manner for tables for city outreach, police outreach, and fire prevention. The park and rec component, I listed as six to 12 one-day events a year. However, I don't believe that this have to be new events. I believe realistically that the parks and rec are already fulfilling a lot of these. It would just be a shift of location for some of them, especially with a focus on multicultural and community. One of the other things that I wanted to note is, for this proposal, especially with the farmers market base, that wide-open area, I'm thinking is a hard-surface floor, not a carpeted floor. In looking at what we have for rental potential in the city of North St. Paul, when you're trying to rent somewhere or do a thing, there's a lot of carpeted space, but there's not much hard-surface space to rent things that are a little bit more harsh on the flooring. So that was why I was thinking that this would also pair well with the farmers market. And going back to my basic, simple, and efficient with a ton of potential. The model I'm proposing uses the community center space slightly under 15.9, slightly under 16% of the time. This would allow us to explore short-term partners for the remaining 84% at our leisure. If we want to partner with Ashland, we can, but we're not committed, and it's not necessary to try and find someone that can be a 25-year partner. I believe this allows us realistic exploration of, let's try someone for two years or a year, see if they're a good fit, but also the financial dependability and stability is not tied to that partner. Partnership is not needed for long-term success of the building, but partnership should be and is encouraged for long-term success of the community center. I know I talked fast, but that's kind of my proposal in a nutshell. So at this point in time, I would wish to open it up for questions.
Well, you answered mine regarding Parks and Rec with it six to 12 times, whether it's in a year.
Right.
I think there's opportunity for growth when it comes to events for the city and engagement. I can tell you on a Parks and Rec side that Farmers Market is a number one. Why don't we have one?
Yep.
I have been passionate about not using, it is a building that used to house the community center. What is it going to be? And that's why I wanted to do the feasibility study. So I think what you presented is fantastic. I think it's a great start to navigate some, to navigate the next area. I didn't think twice about maybe the historical society coming in there. They had a building, but what a great opportunity to have a larger space for them as well as the library. I mean, the options are endless.
Right. And I view the current feasibility study as something that is still good, still needed, and it'll give the city feedback and information about how we should explore short-term partnership.
Right.
So I don't, I don't view this possible route going forward as negating the current one. It just provides a different platform for the suggestions the current feasibility study would provide to us.
Correct. Agreed. It's a different look.
And, right, and going back to your point, like, things like the paint and sip, the farmers market, there's a lot of events that if you're not worried about spilling something on a carpet.
Right.
Are easier to facilitate and engage with, that sometimes you're worried about, oh, you know, the Housie Park, some parts of Casey, although some of those are hard surfaces, aren't always the greatest opportunity for them. And limiting it to one story with a high roof, also I believe, I don't see the second story of the current building as an opportunity. I view that, see the second story of the current building as just a liability and wasted space. I don't feel that if we choose to go this route, limiting it, I view limiting it to one floor as a cost savings and a smart decision for the space, not a, not a loss.
I like the concept, too. I, I think there's some potential here.
You know, and going back to the basic, simple, and efficient, our current model is telling us that we have a $2 million future expenditure after we spend the grant money. And that was one of the big things I was scared about. We've never developed and we've never maintained a plan of how, how do we not pass it on the citizens?
Right.
So that was one of my driving forces here, is I don't believe there is a, you know, the planned expenditure of a plan like this.
I also believe with the open concept, there is opportunity for rentals, whether it's a family reunion, it's a wedding, it's all, again, options are endless.
Right.
It just depends on what you view and what you see. And what you presented with your look on it opens everybody else's eyes to it.
Yeah. And all I would caution is, I 100% agree with you, but, but my thought is, I want to be a little bit careful on the initial plan about only committing things that we can do for 25 years.
Right.
I don't want to commit to the deed part of it, the ton of potential, because there is a ton of potential, but that's why I was so limiting in my scope. But I do agree that if we don't use the potential, that there is there, we're, we're missing, you know, the boat there to not use it.
Right.
Right. I would, I guess, as Councilmember Schwer said, one thing I really like is getting away from the concept of community center and what this building used to be and turning it into, looking at what it could be, what the potential is. And in terms of future state, I mean, we have to start somewhere.
Right.
And I think yours, what, the plan that you laid out provides us the ability to start with something, see where it progresses, and what it could become without getting us too invested into something, in building something for a specific purpose and then having that fall away, and then being left with something, so.
Agreed.
The other thing I would say is, you know, you talked about Parks and Rec, the, as the liaison, I guess, for the Arts and Culture Commission, things like the Fall Arts Festival or Autumn Arts Festival and things like that, we've talked about, you know, are there opportunities for other locations? So this might be an opportunity for that, too, so.
And having a large, a large area, and again, going back to the farmers market, because my significant other is a vendor, I looked at the table spacing from her perspective. So I have eight feet from the wall, and in the center aisle, I have 10 feet between the tables. Even with, and the aisle was 15 feet wide. So even with that kind of spacing, we were able to fit 64 tables. So this is a, not a weather-dependent option for those things. There is no more reined-out for some of these events, which gives more options and more flexibility. Mayor, you've been surprisingly quiet.
Isn't that a good thing?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about what you're talking about.
Okay.
I know you and I discussed before that historical society, I had a conversation with Sue Springborn and when Paul was alive, about trying to, if the, if we're going forward with the community center to try to, to get them in there, because as they're getting older, it's harder for them to stay open and have an area behind glass that people can actually go see, see things, and then when they wanted to be there, so. I'm glad that, for looking into what we're, what we're doing is looking into that, so that's a, that's a good thing. And having a... And having a hard surface where there's not carpeting, but have a completely separate for bathrooms, everything. So if it's, if one isn't open, the other one doesn't have to be, or people are wandering, like now, they're on the second floor before when we had it open and it was dangerous with that low railing. I mean, to me, that's a safety concern to having that museum up there because it's, that railing's not that tall.
Right.
Somebody screwing around.
One of the other things I'd like, i- if, if we go forward to at least ask the architect or the general concept is, so the back of the building, having three very large garage doors to open it up to elements. But I'd also like, if possible, to put the caveat that they're tall enough where if we need to get our emergency vehicles inside, that it is possible. If we need to park fire trucks in there for a week or two, if we need to move emergency services there for a short period of time, this is also an option, i- if something happens to our current facility, where we could use this for a short period of time, if we needed to relocate or do something for that emergency services as well.
And also, there was a comment when us three were at the council with the coffee. People did bring up the businesses that it's great that we're doing things, but they're happening in Casey Park and it really doesn't help. Remember when they were talking about that it really doesn't help when everybody's farther away from downtown for the local businesses? That was a concern they brought up when we were having coffee with them, so.
In reviewing the history of the farmer's markets, and they are successful, even the winter ones. The St. Paul Farmer's Market, they are not accepting applications for 2025 anymore. They're, they're already accepting, they say, the website says, I believe it's April, that they'll start accepting them for 2026. This goes to show that they can be successful. And I like that there are examples out there that we can use from, that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, that we can see what's working at other places and copy the successful ideas. We don't have to build this from the ground up.
Oakdale has a fantastic one.
Mm-hmm.
Where's that?
At their community, at City Hall.
At City Hall, yeah.
Oh, really?
They, theirs is, I believe, on Wednesdays.
The farmer's market.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In, in looking, in looking at the space and what's out there, if we get to a point where we're moving forward with this, from the research I developed, I was going to push for Sundays. Because that's when the St. Paul one is closed, so there's more market.
No, they're open Sundays, Saturday and Sunday. Wintertime, they're only open Saturdays.
Oh, okay.
Sundays, Saturday and Sundays all summer. But sometimes
But there again, to me, that was such a small detail, so far down the road, it, it didn't.
But it's another, it's another view and perspective of the building that housed the communities.
Right. Well, and the other thing I liked is, from my understanding, is the bars that are right next to it, they open at noon on Sunday. So if we close it at them, we're not necessarily in, having a huge fight over parking, depending on how much additional parking we're able to have. Because I wanted to be respectful of the neighbors and things of that nature.
Yeah. One level is, is definitely, you know, if something would be, that would definitely be.
Agreed.
I think the prefab would be probably a better build. You think you're gonna get a stronger product out of it. You know, the pole barn, that's a lot more reasonable. But the prefab can go up in no time, a couple of weeks.
Agreed. And I believe because we, with tearing down part of the library, I believe this almost has to be a summer build in order to ju- just work around constraints and stuff like that for when we would open it up to tear, oh.
Well, they'd probably tear it down and start footings again in the fall, so they can work on it all winter. Prefab can go up all winter.
Yeah, but the furnace is over in the community center, yeah. They got no standalone anything at the library, do they? I think it was just an add-on. I don't think there's a furnace over there.
Just depending on what we're doing with water to not let anything freeze.
So no way that could stand alone. So in water, so they could stand alone if they had to?
Yeah, the water, yeah, I have to.
All right. All right, thanks.
Okay, so I guess that's what I have. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time to put this together.
Yeah. Like I said, I believe it's a financially viable option, long-term for the city. And that's what I was going with.
Members of the grant and everything else.
We can get things cheaply done with Ron and Randy.
Anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening to me. I'm not sure, will, there'll just be more discussion later, I'd assume?
Yeah, we work on the feasibility study and.
I will follow up with deed as well.
Okay.
Maybe they, they could go up.
All right, get back up here, we're alone.
Ray, it's all you.
Yep. Now entering. Thanks again, Jason.
Welcome, Ray.
Thank you. Good job.
Sorry.
Good.
Just want to give a quick update on some items. Mostly what had taken place over 2024, but leading into 2025, since we're early into February here. So be nice and sweet here. Real quick, we'll kick off into the swearing-in and department photo, that's gonna be coming up. The department photo, we're gonna have on March 27th. It'll be the department photo along with our individual photos, hopefully get our wall out here updated. Tentatively, we would like to have our swearing-in ceremony sometime in April. We have several folks that have to get sworn in. Most recently, Sergeant Alice, Sergeant Tyson, and Sergeant Bo were promoted to sergeants. We have new Officer Lore, Officer Tackett, Officer Valdez, Officer Young, who are currently, well, Officer Tackett's no longer on, on field training. He, he's a solo car now, so. Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's out, he's out in his own squad independently, just loving it. Officer Valdez and Officer Young are just finishing up their training. We did have one of our new recruits that didn't make it through. So now our current staffing levels, which I'll get into a little bit later, but these are the folks that we're, we're gonna need to have get sworn in sooner than later. Twenty twenty-four, we had seventy-one hundred calls roughly, which at this point right now, were about eighty-five, eighty-five calls, eighty-five incident reports ahead of where we were last year at this time. We had two hundred and twenty-five assist other agencies, which is the second highest in the last five years compared to last year, which was two hundred and sixty-eight. Our investigations, well, got rocked in 2024. Hundred and ninety-eight cases, highest in five years, possibly the highest ever. But last year, there was a hundred and forty-five cases. We do have that second investigator that is gonna be interviewing next week, next week. So our investigations department has been busy. Actually, just to give, just to give some stats really quick with our investigations. There were seventy-seven cases, and this is 2024 stats. Seventy-seven cases were charged by the city or county attorney's office, which were felonies and gross misdemeanors. Thirty cases were declined with an arrested person. A large majority of the cases were juveniles that were declined and sent to diversion. Twelve cases, twelve of those cases were declined for juveniles, which were being sent to diversion. Twenty-one total juveniles involved cases were declined. Twenty-two cases were under, are under review at the city attorney's office. Twenty cases are under review at our county's attorney's office. Four cases are pending lab results, so BCA is processing some evidence that is pending, these cases. Thirty-four cases are still marked as under investigation, which means they could have been reviewed by our investigator, or they may not have been reviewed by our investigator yet. So there could be a queue that's waiting to get reviewed. Fourteen cases have been turned over to outside agencies, resulting in about two hundred and one cases. For our community events, we had thirty-four community events. I think the only one we didn't do last year was our trunk-or-treat event. We just, we couldn't get any officers to participate. It was a challenging time around Halloween. But nonetheless, polar plunge, coffee with a cop, we did numerous theft prevention events, which I'll talk more on, community policing partnership meetings, National Night Out, our St. Peter Fall Festival, the North Haven Summer Fest, Fishing with a Cop, Truck With, Touch a Truck, the Fire and Ice, and then also the Shop of the Cop, which was a huge event. We had, if it wasn't for our, our partners from the Food Shelf, the Foundation, the Library, Target, city staff, I know I'm missing a bunch of people, but all of these folks made it possible to have our, oh, and by the way, Santa did arrive, Santa did come, so if it wasn't for Santa, that would not have been a good event. But the Target Shop of the Cop was great. We had, I believe, thirty-plus families that we were able to provide services or, you know, goods to and as well as a shopping cart full of groceries. So while they were shopping, we had officers loading up their cars with a ton of groceries, and they were very appreciative of that. I would like to recognize Officer Widman, who is one of our community service officers and helps with the, the Community Service Committee and the Community Policing Committee. She did an amazing job at putting a lot of these events together or helping out with these events along with Detective Mao, our admin staff, Gina Mancini and Kristen Churchill, all had great participation in these, and many of them came in on their days off to help with us, so they did great. You'll see on the last, the bottom slide there, on December seventeenth, Detective Mao and Officer Tackett made a DUI IRS that resulted in a PBT test of point four one nine, which is the highest in the state. So it was a pretty recognizable DWI. Just some stats here. This last, in 2024, we had, you know, person in crisis calls, otherwise known as PIC calls, seventy-four calls, which is down from twenty twenty-three, ninety-five. The big one and the most concerning one was domestic calls went up, a hundred and ninety-nine up from one seventy-five last year, or from 2023. That's concerning, especially with our staffing levels. Fifty-seven search warrants. These warrants include the property, people, vehicles, electronic, DNA, warrants that were, that were already issued and we served upon, so those are all included in that number. A hundred and ten roughly SRO calls, which resulted in either an investigation or report. Please note that we, in the, in December to January, so December of 2024 to just January 2025, our SRO has responded to only Webster Learning Center twenty, twenty times. Those calls have all been reports. And some of them have resulted in investigations. But nonetheless, twenty calls in two months to just Webster Learning Center alone. With that being said, I have had a conversation with Superintendent Andy Beaton, six-two-two, and he is aware, and one of our, one of our agreements was, when Webster came about, we had met and we talked about this particular situation and what is gonna happen when this happens. And now, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down with Officer Allen, Webster Learning Center staff, and Mr. Beaton himself, and evaluate and see what we need to do to make this number not happen like this in two months. He's our officer, our SRO has been dedicated to Webster Learning Center when he's been here, mostly for December and January, and that's unacceptable. Any, any questions on that? Would I just?
December of 2024 and January of 2025?
Yeah, yeah.
As of recent?
Just the one month.
Yeah, yeah.
When it was over at Harmony, did they have this much calls?
In two months? No. No, not in two months.
Well, they went from sixty-eight students at Harmony to a hundred and twelve or fifteen over here.
Yeah, yeah, and the level of care and the level of students that are there are just on a different level. So. Twenty twenty-four, we had twenty twenty-four death investigations. Now, that, that's a variety of type of investigations, but as a result of death. You all are aware that we have an agent, Sergeant Fredericks, Joe Fredericks is an agent with the BCA Violent Crimes Unit. And he sent over some statistics that have been generated in the last year and even the start of this year. Having Sergeant Fredericks with the BCA has been absolutely priceless. We, we've utilized so many resources through the BCA that we would not have had had Sergeant Fredericks not been a part of that joint powers agreement. Cases opened in 2024, well, year-to-date, two hundred and ninety-four. They've closed a hundred and thirty-nine. They've made a five hundred and seven arrests. They've charged a hundred and forty-three people. Two hundred and eighty-two firearms recovered. And I'm gonna show you some, some concerning pictures of firearms that were recovered right here in North St. Paul in a second. Search warrants that were written, three hundred and seventy-four. And fentanyl, two hundred and fifty-three grams, that's a lot. Six hundred and seventy-three, six hundred and seventy-three thousand fentanyl pills. Twenty-nine pounds of marijuana, two hundred and thirty-three grams of heroin. The methamphetamine, that's staggering, a hundred and ninety-three pounds. And nine kilos, two hundred and twenty-two pounds of cocaine, and then fifteen grams of crack cocaine. These, these photos here, this is a gun that was recovered in North St. Paul by Sergeant Fredericks and his BCA team that were working a case in our city. This is another gun that was recovered. You see, yep, the long, long magazine in there. This is another gun that was recovered. Another gun that was recovered. Assault rifle that was recovered. So there, the, the unit is effective, and it's been effective in North St. Paul, and that's scary. That's scary that we have, we have these guns so close, you know, to our people and our community, and they are here. So Sergeant Fredericks and his team are doing a great job. They, he informs me and keeps me up to date on any cases that are high level. Of course, all his cases are high level, but any that he feels I need to know and our team needs to know about right away, he's, he's updating us and letting us know about those. Moving on to just internally and what some current concerns are as of right now, our current staffing levels, what does that look like? We, we are down five officers at, includes four patrol officers and one detective. We have currently two people in field training that are in Phase Two towards the end of Phase Two, have two phases to go, which could mean up to two more months. We have a handful of applicants in right now that will be interviewing this Friday for patrol, and a handful of applicants that will be interviewing for detective next Wednesday. So hopefully, that's promising, and that brings in at least a couple folks to help us out with our complement. But right now, we have, we have, we have a couple officers working on one team and a couple officers working on another team, and then the, so we have four teams, right? And the other two teams are working with one more officer than the short staff teams. So it's, it's made it challenging. Our field training off, our field training officers, over the last couple months, few months, have been training nonstop. And we, not everybody that we've hired has made it through our training, not necessarily because our training is hard, but for a number of reasons, either he or her, her, he or she recognizes policing is not for them to understand, holy cow, this is a very stressful job, I can't do this. And, you know, this, this small-town vibe wasn't for them after they got in and realized they wanted to do something bigger at a bigger agency. So it's been, over the last several years, it's been statistically a battle retaining, and it's been a battle trying to keep up with the much more big-budgeted agencies that can throw out, you know, a lot more better incentives than what we can. So we just gotta come up with, you know, our, our team is working hard to come up with ways to work with what we got to make this place desirable. So it's a challenge, but we continue to work hard. Does anybody, anybody have any questions on our staffing? Also, our, our current CSO, Brandon Carbone, he's gonna be finishing up school here come this spring, so we're hoping to, he's gonna be interviewing this week, and we're hoping to have him come aboard if he does well in his interview, and hopefully he doesn't screw it up, which I, we always give him crap right now, so. So he's a young kid, he's gonna do good, and we're hoping that he is gonna be, become part of our team, in the sense of a, a police officer. So that means we'll have to, which I was just talking to City Manager Frando about, is we'll have to consider opening up our CSO position here pretty quick to try to get, and we've had a lot of inquiries about our city, our community service officers, so. Position. Any questions on that part? Well, you guys are easy. So some other concerns, the amount and type of investigations, boy, they're, they're, they're more violent, they're more, they're most, they're more demanding, and they're more complex. Criminals are unfortunately becoming smarter, and scam-wise, they're, they're just making things more difficult to prosecute. So our investigations unit right now is kind of overwhelmed, so we're hoping that that other investigator that's gonna come on here soon, hopefully, will help relieve some of that. But in the immediate, yeah, our investigators, our investigator in Investigations Unit is, is a little overwhelmed, so we are learning that we have to prioritize differently than what we're used to. So officer mental health and wellness, we've, you know, we, we've always been, it's always been a big focus for us here in North St. Paul, and I don't mean just the PD, I mean as a, as a whole. Our organization has always been a big focus on our employee mental health and wellness and well-being. So law enforcement officers are subject to more stress than the general population, owing to the nature of their jobs. In addition to working with difficult, even hostile individuals responding to tragic events and sometimes coming under fire themselves, they suffer from the effects of everyday stressors. So, you know, it's really important that we keep checking in with our people on a daily basis, you know, and it might even be on a, on a call basis, you know, after every call, it might, it might be, it might be what seems a simple call, but to that person who responded, it wasn't, and so it's important that we keep checking in with our people. Mental health issues in persons in crisis, this is, this is another area of concern. Our people in crisis calls are, it seems like, you know, society now is a little bit more challenging to help out, and it seems like a lot more people fall into crisis. I don't want to say easier, but mental health is a big, is a big topic, and not just for police, but for fire, for medics. So we have to, we have to learn more. We, we're being pressed to pretty much become Dr. Phil and, you know, be the doctor instead of the cop when we get there, and know these health issues and concerns, and what the, the people in crisis are actually going through before they can even see, you know, a, a social worker or a doctor. So that in itself is a little bit more stress on the officers to have that demand put on them. So our training is expanding, and we're being pressed as officers to not only consider these trainings, but now they're becoming mandated, right? So we're mandated to take on more mental health trainings to deal with people in crisis. These people are often suicidal, threatening others, chemical addictions, lack ability to provide ongoing support and resources. One thing I think we're gonna be looking into, and I, I talked with City Manager Frando about, is there are some surrounding agencies, I know South St. Paul has a wonderful program. I spoke with, I met with those folks over there, they have a embedded social worker unit, so they have an officer that is designated to work with that social worker, and they team up, and that officer is only working with people in crisis calls. So we're, they're not necessarily waiting for the calls to come in, they're following up with the people that they've dealt with, and I think it's, I, they've had huge success with it. It's helped them build a better relationship between the police officers, the social workers, and the, the subjects that they're dealing with. So what they're seeing is, you know, the people that they've gone to, to deal with on a call, not wanting to see the cops, but wanting to deal with the social worker, but over time, because they've implemented these visits, these routine visits, now the person is okay with having the officer there, and they build that relationship. So it is something that I'm gonna look for more into and dig into, and it would be great if we could adopt something like that and designate one of our officers to, because we do have, we do have a high volume of persons in crisis in our city, and we do generate a lot of calls in that area, so. Any questions there?
Would that be a, a sworn officer to do that, then?
Yeah.
He would, it would be.
Yeah, and I know what South St. Paul does with their officer that's designated to that unit is, it's a plainclothes officer. Now, he still wears his vest and his, you know, his tools, but he's dressed down, so you don't get the whole vibe of the police officer, which can sometimes be intimidating to folks, so, yeah.
Have we partnered with any of Ramsey County Crisis?
I, South St. Paul?
No, Ramsey County?
Ramsey County is, I think they're partnered with, don't call me, but they, they might be with Roseville in some capacity and Maplewood, or they were with Maplewood, Maplewood in some capacity.
Is that something that we can explore?
Absolutely, yeah, that's exactly what I'm gonna do. Mm-hmm.
Can I add on that a little bit? So when Phil was here, we did look into that, and unfortunately, they didn't have the, the capacity to go bigger than what they were for the cities they were dealing with at the time, but, yeah, I mean, it sounded like a great idea, and one potential is see if it's available for our opioid funds that we have to help out, something like that.
I mean, that's, I, I know firsthand with a family member that actually does it, and who goes through it, it's my brother, and it's intense.
Yeah.
He's with, with Hennepin County, but I know what, I know firsthand what that would be like. That's why I ask if we partner with Ramsey County in regards to that. Just, just a question.
And just to expand on City Manager Frando's statement, there, there are a couple other agencies out there that did utilize their opioid funds to go, go towards that.
Oh, okay.
Our progress, you know, we've always, we've always been about culture, we've always been about our people and our environment, right? We wanna support, we wanna, we, we wanna show care. We definitely have that family vibe here, not just in the PD, but throughout this whole organization. The wellness, the physical and mental side of it, you know, we do our check-ins and we try to keep up with our check-ins and make sure our people are in good, good spirits. But we also recognize great work, you know, we always do the shout-outs, we always recognize when somebody does something good, and we, that's important, that's important to the culture, having good culture. The people we have here, we want to continue to show our appreciation to our people, and we want to provide our officers with the things and, with the things and equipment they need to succeed. That's, that's, that's critical, and that's important. Our environment, as a department, we wanna maintain a good morale, we wanna make sure that the work environment's healthy. I think that's important to being successful and keeping our people in, you know, top performance. But as an organization, I think this, this, the, the city as a whole is, falls into that corte, category. So we wanna be clean, we wanna be professional, we wanna make sure we're updated, and we wanna make sure we're efficient. Our partnerships locally, we have, we have great partnerships with our surrounding agencies. They continue to support us, they can continue to help us out when we need help. The Ramsey County Attorney's Office, the National Black Police Association, National Latino Police Officers Association, the BCA, of course, with our joint powers agreement, the Department of Commerce and Fraud, which I, I now believe is absorbed and partnered with the BCA, and the ATF and the FBI, who have continued to reach out and check in with us, with our small, little agency, which is very nice to hear from them and know that they're, they're, one, they're watching out for us, and two, they wanna make sure that we have what we need. And I think those partnerships go to say that we have really good people here, we have really good officers, even though we're, 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 we're struggling a little bit with our staffing levels, we have people that are here and continue to go out and do great work out in the community, not only in the community and not represent just who they are, and for you folks and for the community here, but as law enforcement officers to their colleagues, and how their, how our partners and our colleagues, you know, always make sure that North St. Paul's okay. I think it says a lot about who we have working here. Our community policing, we're trying to do our best to continue achieving community policing. It's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge when we're, especially mostly because of our staffing level, staffing levels, but, you know, folks are working a lot of overtime and getting the participation, getting the buy-in, you know, to participate in our community events can be challenging. So we're, we're listening to the residents' concerns and we're solving problems. I do know there are a lot of winter parking complaints this year, and that is very frustrating. But again, we are, we are doing our best to keep up with the winter parkers, and I'm really hoping the snow is over until next year, so. We, we did, we, the, the boys and girls did a really good job this last weekend at, enforcing the, the winter parking regulations, so shout-out to the, the teams that worked in this past weekend, and Public Works and their teams. So police officers are attending events, creating events, having conversations, and we continue to get to know our community. Just some processes that have been going on, we, you know, we changed our vacation bid process to allow each officer to place bids for dates that are not taken by officers. I know this might sound very confusing, but no officer ever said, gosh, vacation bid, I love vacation bids. They never said that. Vacation bids is challenging, but we did change the process to allow, so that officers are not taken by officers on their, on their direct teams instead of the entire department. So in the past, we had some challenges where officers would want at the same time off, and we just couldn't make it happen, but we, we changed some things so that we can accommodate and be a little bit more flexible when it comes to vacation bids. We allow more officers to take time off over the same dates, and by doing that, you know, it's, it's really about having that extra person on staff. We do our best to accommodate that. We know things come up, and now we have a lot, you know, we have a lot of youngsters on our, on our team, and it seems like everybody's got a new baby, so. We want them to be a part of their, their, their new child's life. So we changed our hiring process. Jenny Cluse, who's sitting next to me, is a big part of that process. We developed a new streamline of who is involved and what their individual roles and responsibilities are throughout our hiring process. It's much cleaner, and everybody knows what their, what, it, it does come off as a lot more professional, and when someone, I, I've heard numerous compliments by people that have gone through, applicants who have gone through a hiring process, that have said, you know, it was really smooth going through your hiring process, it seemed like everybody knew what they were doing, and I knew where I needed to go. So that's, that's good feedback, and I'm glad it, it seems like it's, it's working out. We continue to tweak as we move along, because we still have some kinks, but nonetheless, it's, it's working out really well. We just received certification of our compliance from Rampart Audit, as it pertains to the BWCC Audit, in accordance with the statute you see there. I will be sending council members and City Manager and Jenny Cluse out to a copy of that, which was shot over to legislation. So they, they know we are in compliance, and we have passed, so we're good to go for a little bit. Training, new year means fresh training, and refresher trainings ahead. We're being, we're at the beginning of the year, so we, with all the new mandates in place, we have a lot of new trainings that our officers are gonna have to register for, which also means, hopefully, our staffing levels pick up, because that's always been another challenge in itself, getting folks to these mandated trainings when we don't have folks to cover the streets. So we're hoping for, you know, for some new applicants here and some new folks. The Ramsey County Attorney's Office training, these, these here trainings that are, that are new, newly implemented as mandates, BCA Critical Incident Training, Crisis Intervention and Mental Illness Crisis. and Mental Illness Crisis, uh, Autism, Conflict Management and Mediation, Recognizing and Valuing Community Diversity and Cultural Differences to Include Implicit Bias, um, these are, you know, some of these courses are week-long, so, uh, with our staff, that can be challenging to get somebody to go to these for a week, um, so, uh, and then, of course, um, our collaboration amongst the city other departments has always been strong, it's always been good, um, and it keeps getting better and it keeps getting stronger, um, and I'm glad to be a part of this, um, uh, organization. Look ahead, I wrote ahead, services needs to meet the community needs and expectations to promote the best outcomes, um, you know, these here are some, some items that I hope we can, uh, look into and discuss further, um, down the road, uh, obviously, that second in command, that Deputy Chief Police, um, an additional CSO, having two CSOs, and I talked about it, um, uh, a few months ago, that, that piggyback, that frog, frog, that leapfrog effect, right, um, having that CSO, so that when he or she's done, we have one that's already in training, and we can continue to invest and, um, have officers come on right out of our CSO program, um, two additional patrol officers, which means, um, power cars, something we haven't had since, I think, my third or fourth year as a cop, um, and it worked out really well, it always seemed like there was a cop on every corner, and, um, we were, we were able to be really proactive in our traffic, um, enforcement, or we were able to get out of squads and actually go engage with the community, um, and just take, uh, proactivity policing to another level, especially community policing, which is, uh, which, what we strive for. Additional Officer of Patrol Outreach Engagement, we currently have, um, Officer Whitman, like I said, who kind of oversees our, uh, that area, the community policing, she does a wonderful job at getting out and connecting with folks in, uh, various areas of the community, um, and everybody knows Officer Whitman, especially all the kids. Additional Incentives Towards Officer Wellness and Wellbeing, additional incentives towards recruitment, additional incentives towards retention, um, a crime analyst, and again, we talked about that, mental health and crisis embedded worker, um, so these items here are just some items that I, I would like to, you know, just put in your ear and, um, consider having further discussion down the road here. And that's all I got.
That's right.
Yeah, do you have, anybody have any questions?
Any of the, any, uh, officers on interviews coming up, are any laterals you know of?
Yes, um, our, we do have, we do have some, um, laterals for the detective spot, and I think we have one or two for the police officer.
Besides our CSO?
Besides our CSO, yeah, yep, yeah, so promising candidates.
As a chief, are you informed if there's any opportunities statewide for funding or grants to help you with those additional items you're looking for?
I am, I am, Jason, uh, and one thing that we would like to, and I should have maybe put this on the road ahead as well, is, it, we would like to, um, look into having a grant writer, or contracting a grant writer, um, they are very time-consuming, um, and, um, we did have a gentleman that's no longer with us, that was really good at grant writing, um, but, uh, now, when I go and ask anybody that if they're interested in being a grant writer, I get no interest. So, yeah, yeah, yes, there are plenty of grants out there, we, uh, just need somebody to, or we could contract with, consider contracting somebody and have them come in and do our grant writing for us.
Yeah? I heard this morning, this is the first anniversary of the Burnsville situation, just wanted to say, oh, sorry, I'm for the police family.
Yeah.
About that, and your latest, man, it went quick in some ways.
I, I, I appreciate that, Mayor, and, uh, you know, utter respect for them, um, would it be okay if we had a moment of silence?
Sure.
Amen, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
No other business.
Other business, and the next one is Call for Agreement.
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwerer. Second, Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have five minutes, enjoy your time. Yes.
All right.
Call the meeting to order, please, let's stand for Bledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwerer?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here.
Thank you very much, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the presentations.
Thank you, Mayor, um, we have, uh, the new Ramsey County Commissioner here tonight, Kelly Miller, for introductions, uh, please come up and welcome.
Very proud, you got a pat on the back.
I know.
That's a good, that's a good.
She's fabulous, she was with me all throughout my campaign and door knocking, and so she likes to come with mom to these events, so, bonjour, good evening, um, Mayor Mungy?
Mungy.
Mungy, perfect, um, and members of the North St. Paul City Council, my name is Kelly Miller, and I'm the newly sworn in Ramsey County Commissioner of District Seven, and I'm honored to be here with you tonight, um, first and foremost, I want to express my excitement about working alongside you, um, um, to support North St. Paul and ensure that our county and our city relationships, um, maintain strong or are able to grow, so over the past six weeks, I've been in deep in the onboarding process, meeting with county staff, receiving my committee appointments, internal and external, and getting up to speed on ongoing initiatives throughout our district and throughout the county, um, as a commissioner, I've been appointed to nine standing internal, um, Ramsey County committees that meet either weekly or on an as-needed basement basis, um, I've also been assigned to thirteen additional boards and commissions outside of Ramsey County, a few of those include the Workforce Innovation Board, um, um, which also includes the Association of Workforce Boards from Minnesota, the Ramsey Washington Recycling and Energy Board, um, plus the Partnership on Waste and Energy with Hennepin County or the PWE Board, um, I am on the Executive Committee of the MetroRide Emergency Services Board, which is really exciting, um, the Metropolitan Conservation Joint, um, Districts Powers Board, and, uh, my most favorite or coveted board is the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District Board. I'm told that somebody dresses up like a mosquito and I voted, it won't be me. Um, so as part of my ongoing, uh, my onboarding process, my staff and I have reached out to each of you to schedule meetings, um, to schedule individual meetings, I'm eager to learn more about you, yourself, uh, North St. Paul, and how I can support the work that you guys are doing for the community and for the broader Ramsey County, um, I look forward to collaborating with each of you and ensuring that we're working together to serve the residents of North St. Paul, um, uh, thank you for having me, and I'm happy to listen, learn, and, you know, support you and the work that you're doing as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. You can give her a clap, go ahead.
Yay!
All right.
All right, next up is our Consent Agenda, Item A, February 4th, 2025 Workshop and Regular Meeting Minutes, Item B, General Claims of $1,187,464.97, Item C, League of Minnesota Cities Municipal Tort Liability Waiver, Item D, Adopt Resolution Updating 2025 City of North St. Paul Fee Schedule, Item E, Tobacco License Renewal for Nicky's E-Sig and Tobacco, Item F, Approve 2025 Spring Directional Bore for the Electric Department, uh, Item G, Public Work Surplus, Item H, Resolution Accepting Donations for January 2025, Item I, Building Permit Report, January of 2025, Item J, Non-Union Employee Benefits, Item K, New Student Appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission, Item L, Appointment to the Police Civil Service Commission, Item M, Appointment to the Economic Development Authority, and Item N, Appointment to the Ramsey County League of Local Governments.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Anybody like to poll, or do I have a motion to approve what we have?
I'll, I'll motion.
Okay, Councilmember Schwerer, do I have a second?
I will second.
Councilmember Woods, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, meeting open to the public, John Schmal. Good evening, John.
Evening, Council, uh, Mayor, um, three items that I quickly go over, brought up at the last meeting, the, uh, uh, offers for a sewer colonoscopy by a plumber, and, uh, the, uh, out, uh, based on my drive from the barber, Mary the Barber, saw three of trucks of this plumber on my drive from over on Seventh to my house, so evidently, they're doing a land office business, and I checked with Chris, and he says, yep, they were pulling a lot of permits, so, they're doing a good job of getting into people's houses and, uh, probably finding that they don't have clay pipes going out there, but they got something else wrong, so, but as long as you can get in that house, you can make a sale. Uh, second item is the, uh, I just shook my head, the air purifier, I don't know why we need air purifiers, I haven't got a clue, is it the wind blowing off of Shifsky Mountain? It should be frozen now, there shouldn't be dust in the air, your, your windows are closed, your, your doors are closed, I did talk to one individual who said he did get a air purifier, better known as the other John, and I asked him, did he have it plugged in, and he said, he did, he had it plugged in, I said, do you feel better now that it's plugged in, and now this is an item that's gonna take more power, didn't have one before, but he's got one now and it's plugged in, and, uh, my, uh, look at the situation with, uh, these offers by our electric utility, I compare it to my XL, uh, um, provider in my cabin, or for my cabin up north in Wisconsin, they, they give out, not give out, but they make sales of items like Wi-Fi thermostats, all my Wi-Fi thermostats, I got from XL through their offers, and, oh, well, uh, we don't have gas, yeah, that's right, but I don't have gas at my cabin, and they offer thermostats, which I took advantage of, I don't know what is with this air purifier thing, don't, don't understand it, don't understand it, why, this is a, another item to more, use more power, and as this fellow that I talked to, he says, well, it's not elephants, it's just mice, that, the amount of electricity, well, if you took all the mice in the world and add them up and weigh them, they'd probably be a million pounds more than, than the elephants.
All right. Thanks, John.
Anything else?
Any others?
Anything?
I don't think so.
All right, up to City Business Action Items and Recommendations, uh, first item up, there's, or, we have two items, both are gonna be for the street utility project coming up this summer, but the first one is calling for the public hearing on proposals to adopt a street reconstruction plan and intent to issue general obligation to street reconstruction bonds, and we have Finance Director Winnick here to speak to that.
Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, yes, this is the beginning of a short but lengthy process of issuing bonds, um,